Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park, Georgia. I am Mayor Bianca Motley-Broom. We have a full quorum with Council members Clay, Carn, Allen, and Gay. At this time, it is 7:30 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. Our first item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Our invocation this evening is being done by Pastor Stacy Alexander.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Let's pray. Father God, first, we want to say thank you for life, health, and strength. We ask you to be in the midst of all things concerning us in this great city and in our governing body. We ask you, Lord Jesus, for your grace, for your wisdom, that we will execute always our love and care and kindness for one another. We ask you, God, to give our governing body wisdom, strategy, justice, and fairness in everything that they do for this city. Lord, we acknowledge who you are, and we know we can't do anything without your leading. So, we pray, Father God, for the citizens of this great city, and we ask you, God, to cover us, not just College Park, but those that are around us. We pray for the White House. We pray for our state and all of the other people around in our community. We ask that you bless and keep them. Lord, we need you in this season. We pray for those in Ukraine right now. We pray for peace all around the land and around this country. Lord, we love you, and we know that without you would nothing be. So, we acknowledge you tonight. We ask you to be with our mayor and council and every department head in this city, and especially our citizens. We thank you in advance because you have never failed us. We know that's something you can't do, and it's in Jesus' wonderful name that we pray, and every heart did say amen.
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 Additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda? Madam City Manager?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Community. I have a couple of changes to the agenda. I'm going to start out with asking you to remove item 4B. And with the removal of item 8A, I'm going to ask that we make item 8B, 8A, and add an item 8B, which is T-SPLAS Bond Financing.
I'm sorry, Madam City Manager, 8B is the title?
T-SPLAS Bond Financing.
Financing. I'm sorry, I still couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry. T-SPLAS Bond Financing is item 8B.
Thank you.
And those are our changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve that changes to the agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. And the second from Councilman.
Yeah, second.
All right, let me, all right, let me ask, Councilman Clay, you made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. That was unanimous. Item 3A is approval of the regular session minutes from March 21st.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Clay.
Second with one, one issue long.
Okay, there's a second with some changes. All right, go right ahead, Councilman Carn.
Just one there. Packet, page 20, line 729. This is a family in that sense. I think that's what it said. That's it.
All right, any others? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, hearing none, that is unanimous as well. Thank you. All right, so we have the workshop session minutes. Is there a motion to approve? I have a, I have a change on that one.
I'll move to approve with changes.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All right, go right ahead, Councilman Clay.
I have no changes. I was referring to yours.
Oh, okay. Does anyone else have any other changes? Okay, all right. So, it is line 190 on packet page 37. Madam Clerk, I would ask just to have someone listen to that line again because I believe what I said to Dr. Beasley was that I had interviewed one of his students who was applying to my alma mater. Not that one of his junior lead scholars was from my alma, that, that's incorrect, but the actual wording of it, if you could go back and take a look. So, any other corrections? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. We're moving on to proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements, and the first one is presentation of proclamation designating April as Georgia Cities Week in, we're designating the month of April as Georgia Cities Week? Okay. In the City of College Park, we'll be introducing our new employees and also presenting our Employee of the Month. So, we will start and come on down so we can talk about Georgia Cities Week. Oh, we are, we are actually recognizing April 24th through April 30th as Georgia Cities Week, not the entire month of April, because that would be a little strange. So, let me go ahead and read this. Whereas a city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact on its residents. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Georgia that they can help shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park hereby proclaim April 24th through April 30th Georgia Cities Week, proclaim this fourth day of April 2022. There are 537 cities in the great state of Georgia, and we are proud to be a partner of the Georgia Municipal Association, and this has been spearheaded, Georgia Cities Week, by our dynamic clerk, Chevila Ames, who deserves a round of applause, who serves a very, very important function in our city government. The city clerk is the oldest job in city government, and she is responsible for so much to make this city run, and we are certainly grateful to all the employees that make the City of College Park run because we cannot do it without you. Thank you very much for everything you do.
I'd like to introduce our new employees. Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to introduce our new employees. We have Mr. Shantess Edmison. He's our new Assistant City Manager. And we also have Mr. Reginald Coefield, who's our new Code Enforcement Officer. And those are our new employees for the month. This is our second Employee of the Month, so we'd like to ask Ms. Belinda to give us a little information about our Employee of the Month.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce to you the March 22 All-Star for Employee of the Month. That's going to be Ms. Jatia Ellis. While she's coming, Jatia works with Code Enforcement. She's the Lead Officer. That's through Economic Development. Tia has been with the city since 2019. Tia also handles ordinance with the grace and respect. She was nominated twice, this month, once last month. She goes above and beyond. That was what was on her sheet, to do her task every single day, above and beyond. So, we have a couple gifts for you, Tia. This is the All-Star, your All-Star t-shirt. We got some fun for you. We also have a picture for you, one's going to go out front. That's for you and one's for the department. Congratulations.
I know, I should say it. What you don't know is she's also a kickball star.
Mayor, do you want to step down? Mr. Clay, come this way. See everybody. Tilt it back for me just a little bit. It'll reflect if you don't tilt the picture. That's good. One more time. We're good.
That's it? Back four six. Next up is remarks for citizens. Ms. Ames?
The first remark is Tracy Wyatt to discuss police and other.
I have a question. Are we continuing to follow the standard rules that we've been following on?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
May I ask, what standard rule is that?
Three minutes.
Okay. I'll try that. But if not, I'll ask for more time. Anyway, heard something about T-SPLAS. I hope y'all voted down, because if my street can't get paid, then I want six ways paid. That's on that. But I also want to talk about inconsistencies, I think, that seems to be going on with promotions. I guess it appears on if somebody likes you, they don't post your job, and if they don't like you, they do post your job. For an example, I know in Recreation, the job wasn't posted. Someone was promoted within, which I think is a great thing. But I also noticed that when it came to the Police Department, you guys have decided to go for a search. While I'm sure they appreciate the raise that you all given them, I think one of the best things you can do for morale is to promote from within. And it gives a chief, a deputy chief, a chance to get promoted, major. It gets a captain to get a chance to go to major. It gets a lieutenant a chance to go to captain. It gets a sergeant a chance to go to lieutenant, and they get a patrolman a chance to go to sergeant. So, I'm deeply disappointed in the fact that we have chosen once again to be inconsistent in our practices when it comes to hiring. You did it on by them. You know, you drill Sabrina about all this stuff, but yet the last two people you put on by there hadn't heard one thing. So, I'm very disappointed. I guess it's a matter of who liked you. If you like them, we ain't going to follow the procedures. If we don't like them, we're going to do everything we do to keep them off the boards. I'm disappointed in that, Councilman Clay. You are the senior man up there. I thought there were some of the things you ran for to make sure that didn't happen, but it seems as though, you know, the council just folded. And, you know, there was talk about being a strong mayor. Well, I suggested to you that we don't need to change the rules because this week, Council, we do have a strong mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ames?
The next comment is Jamel McKenzie to discuss police and other.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jamel McKenzie, and I reside in the Link subdivision in the great city of College Park. As you all are aware, I serve several roles here in this city, but the one that I have functioned in the longest and that remains near and dear to my heart is that of a chaplain. I formed the Chaplaincy Program for our Police Department in 2016, and I was installed officially as the Director of Chaplaincy for the city in 2017. As a chaplain to our law enforcement team, I provide sole care to our officers and police staff. Since 2017, our Chaplaincy Program has expanded along with the installation of four additional chaplains who are dedicated men and women of the cloth that render their time and talent and service to our police, fire safety, city employees, and anyone in this city who is in need. Several weeks ago, I spoke to this council, we were still meeting virtually, on behalf of the amazing officers and command staff who serve and protect this city, asking you to increase their pay and to create an environment or an atmosphere wherein our Police Department could thrive and retain the team that we have. I stand before you this evening to say thank you. Thank you, Councilman Clay. Thank you, Councilman Carn. Thank you, Mayor Motley-Broom. Thank you, Councilman Allen. Thank you, Councilman Gay. And thank you to our new city manager, who I'm going to say something about. Thank you for listening. Thank you for caring, and thank you for making the budgetary adjustments necessary to demonstrate to our officers that College Park takes care of its own. And I want to say a special thank you to our new city manager, Ms. Tyus, for coming into the city as a breath of fresh air and for hitting the ground running with a sense of urgency. I would like to also welcome our new Assistant City Manager, Mr. Edmison. I also want to congratulate Jatia because she definitely played that game well on yesterday. I'm excited and I'm hopeful about where we are at this moment of time, and I'm more excited about where we can go from here. My prayer is that we continue to be open to change and new possibilities as we dedicate ourselves to doing whatsoever is necessary to make College Park a village where everyone can thrive. Thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
Next, we have Larry Evans to discuss other.
Doesn't appear that Mr. Evans is here.
Okay, so I'm going to read the email comments now. Okay, the first comment is from Elizabeth Copeland, and it reads, "The light bill rates are ridiculous. I've called several, I've called in several times to be told that I'll never be able to determine how the light bill amount was calculated. This is unacceptable in addition to the lack of communication that is displayed from the Customer Service Department." The next comment is from Marjorie Dent, and it reads, "To Madam Mayor, Council Members, and City Manager, there is no way to adequately thank you for your service to this city, for all the time you dedicate to focusing on the issues and meeting with residents. You spend countless hours preparing for council meetings, presiding during the council meetings, and countless hours at public events. Here is a special reason I thank you. Thank you for hearing our request for an increase in the salary for College Park Police Officers. You did it. I would add, it is more than money. Value is restored, honor is restored, and respect is restored. I can have more peace of mind, our community will be safer, and more officers will join our elite Police Department. Again, thank you for granting our request. May the Lord bless you and keep you. Marjorie A. Dent."
Ms. Ames, I know you're in the middle of your email. Mr. Evans is here, so when you're finished with that, we'll let Mr. Evans get his time. Or he can come up right now. That's fine, too.
Okay.
Oh, just being poised. Okay, all right.
I'll finish.
Okay.
The next comment is from Kathleen McQueen, and it reads, "My name is Kathleen McQueen. I reside at 1965 Lyle Avenue, Ward 1. I'm submitting my public comment from a place of frustration. There's a house that constantly blasts loud music, and recently I had to take cover because multiple gunshots were right beside my office window. I have submitted complaints on iNotify, which is rather useless. I have submitted complaints to Code Enforcement. I called the police, and I was told I had to wait until after 10:00 PM. More and more residents are working from home. Imagine having to excuse yourself from a business call to go outside trying to get attention of your neighbor to turn down their music. The house has multiple cars and several people living in the house. It was explained to me that it's hard to prove a boarding house. I have seen other city ordinances that state if there are more than four unrelated individuals in a zoned residential home, it is a rooming house. The investors that renovate houses into boarding scenarios do not have vested interest in our neighborhoods. They leach off of our progress. I'm asking to revisit the ordinance of homes that are termed become boarding houses. Absentee investors are the reason for poorly maintained apartments, like property in boarding houses. There needs to be tighter guidelines as a means to impose fines and violations. To the council persons of each ward, I challenge you to make a decision on improving the boarding house and absentee investor ordinance as fast as you made a decision on renaming a building. This situation is not going to improve. Remember, the next boarding house may be next to yours. Thank you, Kathleen McQueen." Okay, the next comment is from Dennis Adams, and it reads, "Good evening, all. I am Dennis Adams, and I reside in the Embarcadero Club Apartments. All I want to say is that I'm hoping that we are not using Ms. Sabrietta Beasley as a scapegoat simply because the higher-ups are not properly investigating matters. If this is being done, this is completely unethical. Thank you."
Chevila, could you speak a little closer to the mic, please? I may have a little difficulty hearing you.
Did you want me to reread that one?
No, I think I got that, but spotty.
The last comment is from Mary Sheffield, and it reads, "First off, thank you for prayers and coming from everyone. I would like to thank Mercedes and the mayor for reaching out to me consistently during the stage in my life. I am hopeful. I don't need anyone to worry. I just need positive prayers and positive thoughts. I'm planning on living, and I thank you for everything. I got a little sad because I used to be at every council meeting, including everything from the beginning to now, and I no longer can. I still watch the meetings, but I no longer hear my name, and that makes me sad. We have so much changed in our community. I just do not want to disappear. I plan to get better with someone's liver. I'm not giving up, and I hope no one gives up on me. Thank you, Chevila. I don't know your new name, but I know the mayor forgets it from time to time." That's all I have.
I've been getting better. Mr. Evans?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Larry Brady Evans. I reside at 2112 West Princeton Avenue, College Park, Georgia, where I've lived here all of my life, since 1959. I'd like to greet you, Mayor, Council, elected city officials, in the greetings of peace and understanding. I was here last meeting, and I didn't want to be rude. I tried to do the proper protocol, because that's what we was taught here in College Park. They said I only had one minute, so I accepted that. But from my understanding, the minutes should be, for those who are late, should still have the same three minutes. That's just my perspective on it, and I know time running out, and I'll be back if time run out this time. But however, I'd like to address the City Council again. I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. The ugly is, we have a broom here in College Park. Mayor broom, that is. She seem to be sweeping out the old and bringing in the new, and that's what we need here. This need to be swept where College Park is for everyone. Some people think they have people who sit in high places, and they can't be removed. As you was voted in, you could be voted out. As you was hired, you could be fired. And we're the citizens of College Park. We are the employees, not you all. I go to the City Hall to pay my bill. They sitting in there as though they hired me to pay my bill. There are some, not all, in City Hall, but they sit around and look at you and act as though they are busy, and they really not doing anything. Don't want to, don't want to wait on you, seem like to me. But that kind of spirit need to be eradicated and to be looked into, because like I say, there are those who sit in high places who think they have someone who sits in high places. But we're the citizens of College Park. We have someone who's in high places as well, and I call him our Father, which art in heaven. And I think he got the power to remove unrighteousness in this city of College Park, and let's do it for all. I said it then, I'm going to say it again. If you white, College Park is out of sight. If you black, College Park is where the good living is at. If you brown, you welcome in this town. Even if you yellow, you welcome, fella. If you gay, in College Park, you can stay. So, I said that to say this. College Park is for us all. We all are one family, and that's the human family. And just because you got a little fat piggy bank, that don't mean you're wrong. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No others? If anyone wishes to speak and hasn't had the opportunity and didn't get a chance to sign in, you have one minute if you'd like to come down and speak. Seeing no others, we'll go ahead and move forward. Item 6A, consideration of an action on a request for approval of fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget adjustments. And good evening, Ms. Flor Bradley. How are you?
Good evening. Resolution 202216 is amending the budget based on the approval of the council from last meeting on the salary increases. And the general fund budget will be increased by $305,066, and that brings the proposed general fund budget from $32,473,296 to $32,778,362. Any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Flor Bradley? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I have no questions. I'm happy to do it.
Councilman Carn?
Right, I'm on board.
Councilman Allen?
No, it was the right thing to do.
Councilman Gay?
No question.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Carn, I heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second. Move to approve.
I heard Councilman Allen's second, so all those in favor, all those in favor, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, item 6B and 6C, we generally take in tandem. Any questions from Ms. Flor Bradley on either the top 10 delinquent utility customer accounts or the top 10...
Councilman Carr, I heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to approve.
I heard Councilman Allen's second, so. All those in favor, all those in favor, gentlemen? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Alright, item 6B and 6C we generally take in tandem. Any questions from Ms. Flor Bradley on either the top 10 delinquent utility customer accounts or the top 10 delinquent taxpayers? We'll start with Councilman Clay.
I got my questions answered.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carr?
In regards to the top 10 delinquent customers, I don't see any business names or entity names on here, so. We don't know who owes what. Can you get me another copy with the names on it? Does yours have the names on it here?
No, we typically do not add them to the agenda, so I can send that to you separately.
Now, maybe, am I the only one that doesn't have names on 6B?
No, everyone has names.
It comes separately. Ms. Flor Bradley sends that under separate cover to us.
I didn't, but I can.
Okay, why are we doing them separately? Is there a reason that they're separate?
That the names aren't listed on the agenda?
Well, I see, in your matrix, your yellow sheet?
Yes.
Business name and address.
Yes, we, by law, we're not supposed to list their information for the public to see.
Okay, so.
So I can send that to you separately via email.
Alright, well. Alright, it seems like, you know, when we knock, get it knocked down somewhat, that it builds back up. And the next thing you know, everybody's just about 60 days again so quickly. I'm assuming these are some of the same ones that have over before and keep doing it, so.
And they've been disconnected.
Alright.
Councilman Allen?
I was glad to see that you've collected a lot of the debts on the property tax, so.
And I did send an email.
Thanks for the update on that.
Okay.
You've done a lot of good work, or your team has done a lot of good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Tell them thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Gay?
I don't have anything.
Alright. Thank you so much, Ms. Flor Bradley.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of an action on a request for approval to purchase a 2022 Ford F-150 XL regular cab pickup truck as a replacement for unit number 521. Who's gonna be handling that this evening, Ms. Tyes? Oh. Hello again, Ms. Flor Bradley.
This is a replacement for the meeting reading department, and it is a budgeted item.
I move to approve.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Clay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Any questions from Ms. Flor Bradley?
Ms. Bradley, uh. I look at this up. One of the things I want us to try to be cognizant of, we buy these on, from dealers that have state contracts, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I know there are a couple of African-American owned outfits that every now and then we would purchase from, so. I'd like us to be cognizant to look out for that when we can do it. And I know we've done it in the past, but I want to make sure we're looking.
Yes, sir.
A couple in particular, I know we've bought from before, if you, I don't know if you go back into archives or whatever have you, but. I know we used to try to make a point to do that because we're severely limited in terms of the amount of minority contracts that come our way, that I've seen lately here, so let's just make a concerted effort for that.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Any other questions from Ms. Flor Bradley?
What happens to the old vehicle? Do we use?
Depending on the condition, it will be sold at an auction or we can move it to another department, transfer it over to another department that's in need.
Councilman Gay, any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, all the, we have a motion, a second, that's right, yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 6E is consideration of an action on a request for approval to authorize payment for emergency repair and restoration expenses caused by a broken water main line in the east lobby at the Georgia International Convention Center. Hello, Ms. Miller?
Hello, how are you?
Doing well. Thank you.
How's everybody doing? This was from a repair. We had the bracket that was holding the pipe in the ceiling, where we have the artwork. It broke, so the, it was water in the lobby, like we were going swimming. So we had surfco to come in, take up all the water, legacy went up, they fixed the pipe. This was about 8:00 at night and we had it ready for a group that came in the next morning by 9:00. So it was an emergency repair.
Mercedes, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How do, how did we know that the pipe had broken? How long did it take us to recognize that it was leaking?
We immediately know because the water didn't dribble out. It rained like a waterfall. So as soon as we saw the water, the water started about 7:30, but it didn't, it didn't come down, it just splashed down, so we noticed immediately.
So, how long did it take you to shut the water off?
Um, we could not shut all the water off in the building because we had a group on the other end of the building. So as soon as we could, we turned the water off on that end, so it took about an hour. But luckily, under the carpet, there is no padding, so it's on cement, so it was easy to evaporate the water.
So, is the construction of that building, is it zoned, for want of a better word, appropriately? That you can shut down the right amount of the building? I'm thinking about toward the future. What, what is the minimum or maximum, maybe the maximum area that can be, require being shut down if you have to shut it down?
Okay, from my understanding, from what Brian explained to us, where that water was coming from, if we shut it out down, it would shut off all the water in the building. So we had to isolate that area, get the water up, because if we totally shut it off, we had a cheerleading group in the exhibit halls and it would have turned the water off down there. So it was one of the main pipes.
I guess my question is, how many valves do you have in that building? And I know it's not a fair question. I should have thought of it before. That you can, you can shut off a room, or you can shut off 1/4 of the building, or 1/8 of the building.
I have no idea, but I'll find out for you.
I'm just thinking that might be a good thing to note. Because if that had happened at a time when nobody was there, and I know we have security, but it could have been a while before we discovered.
With the amount of water coming out, the security would have noticed it immediately. It would have been an immediate notice, because it was loud and it was a lot of water.
It was a lot of water.
But I'll find the information out for you.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Carr, any questions?
So carpet, it fared pretty well.
Surfco brought, they brought up the machines to suck up the water, then they put fans out so the water could dry out more.
And I gotta admit, you've done a pretty doggone good job with 22-year-old carpet. It's really something when you walk through there and to know that carpet's that old and that we managed to maintain it that well. Do we, we still need a building maintenance operations person?
We do.
I really, Ms. Tyes, I wanna, we, we got a lot of positions we gotta fill. And we really need, you know, I just feel like we're really exposed when stuff just happens in general and we don't have staff in here and we gotta really figure out something here. It's still a long way to July. And I just leave it at that, but we need our people. We gotta, we gotta fill these positions. But, great job on the save.
Councilman Allen?
No, I just, about the same question that Councilman Clay had. If there's a way that you could shut off one section without the other, that would be good. But, you know, I don't know how much the cost would be or where the break was, so.
I know it can be done and I will get you out information. I just don't know the information.
No, no, that's fine. I just think it's something we need to look into, just to make sure. Because if it were to happen right in the middle of an event and you could shut off one hall and keep the other ones going, then that would, you know, you could.
Now, I do know it can't be shut off like that. It has to be shut off in quarters. So you have the exhibit halls, you have the ballroom, and then you have the meeting rooms. So my problem again was shutting it off and people using the bathroom or doing anything, they still needed water.
No, thanks.
Councilman Gay?
No, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Gay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. So we also, 6F?
I thought it was removed.
Do you have 6F? Is 6F removed as well?
It was removed.
Okay, alright. My apologies. We have no public hearings, so item 8A is consideration of, or 8A has been removed, 8B has been moved up to 8A. Consideration of an action on a request for approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of College Park and Fulton County for the provision of 800 megahertz radio system access in the amount of $99,159. Enter M. Chief McCray, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. Any questions for, for M. Chief McCray?
No, it's something we have to do.
Yeah.
I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Is there a second? Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen. That is unanimous. Item 8B is T-SPLAS bond financing. Madam City Manager?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and City Council. This item is requesting that we, that we approve a bond issuance in the amount of $11,500 against a $12 million allotment of T-SPLAS funds. We have an allotment that has a five-year life. We normally are receiving about $200,000 a month for, is it a month?
Yes, ma'am.
For in disbursements. What we're proposing is that we do a bond issuance to get in advance against that $12 million so that we can complete a couple of projects. There are, there's a balance that we need to cover on the road street bridge. There's a balance of, and that's about $3 million and some change. There's also a balance on the walkway. And this, the proposal also provides an opportunity to put about $3 million aside that we did not have for additional road improvement. And I will, I'll turn it over to Ed Walsh to add any more details, but this is a request to do a $12,500,000 bond issue against our T-SPLAS pot to, to the second phase of T-SPLAS for the city.
Good evening, Mr. Walsh.
Good, hello, Mayor, Council. So y'all have already approved roads. And roads had $7 million of cash in T-SPLAS number one. And we saved about $1 million for a project on Virginia Avenue and for speed bumps. So we had about $7,700,000 for Road Street that came out of cash in T-SPLAS one. We always knew that the other $3 million for roads was coming from T-SPLAS number two. We were going to fund it with cash as we collected that $200,000 each month. The pedestrian bridge between the GICC property over Camp Creek Parkway into 6 West, it was bid out over a year ago, you know, it was $18 million. Jackson had worked so hard to get us a grant from the ARC, but it was way more than we could afford, so we scrapped it. Jackson bid it out again, this time it came in about $13 million and change. And so Jackson scurried around, y'all know how he does, and he got us another grant from the ARC for $1,500,000. So it left our 20% match on the pedestrian bridge of about $3 million and change. The actual amount is $3,700,000. And so, staff met last week, where could we come up with the $3.7 million match? And this idea about a T-SPLAS bond came up. And so, if we got $3 million and change for roads and $3,700,000 for the pedestrian bridge, it wouldn't leave any money for you all to pave streets in the city. So Ms. Tyes came up with the idea that we would add another $3 million to those two projects, so we would have three projects and a bond issue that's funded from the T-SPLAS. And so we'd have, the projects are $10 million, $627,000 is the principal amount. And with interest, it'd be about $11.5 million payback over a five-year period at an interest rate of 2.5%. And so with zero growth, the T-SPLAS will bring in $12 million, the payback's 11 and a half. This allows you to do the Road Street project, the pedestrian street, pedestrian bridge project, and $3 million for projects inside the city. That's it, Mayor.
Questions for Ms. Tyes and Mr. Walsh, starting with Councilman Clay.
I just want to make sure that everybody understands the, which I say, the predictability of the T-SPLAS. Can you comment on that, Ed?
So, you know, we've been collecting it for years. We've had the T-SPLAS one, was a five-year SPLAS. It started out at about $180,000, $190,000 a month. The most recent checks have been like $210,000, $215,000 a month. So at 0% growth, we did $200,000 a month for 60 months. Two times six is 12, that's our 12 million dollars. So in the event we have a recession and it collects less than that, we'd have to make up that money from some other place. So that's why when we ran the numbers, we had the total payback of 11 and a half million instead of 12. So that left $500,000 that could decline. And so if you're collecting $200,000 a month, times 12 months, that's $2,400,000 a year. If you had a recession and sales taxes dropped by 10%, which is, that's a severe recession, that's $240,000. And so, we felt that we were being conservative and doing zero growth and leaving $500,000 at the end as a coverage factor.
So what you're basically saying is it's about as stable a revenue as you can get.
Property tax is the only thing that would be more stable.
Would be more stable, right. That's all I, I understand what we're doing. I didn't have a question on that, but I just wanted the public to hear that, that we're not betting on something that's unpredictable or what have you. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
A couple of things, Ed.
Yes, sir.
I know we went over this the other day. Yeah, I mean, T-SPLAS, you know, it's money in the bank, no doubt. Everybody knows that. I've seen several T-SPLAS come up here. I voted on one as a vice mayor with the county commissioners once when Jack was out of town and I stood in with the vote for the three-quarters of a penny. Couple of issues I had, and I guess some of this, I think I saw this in December. Ambrose, you were speaking on this with the, with the, with the road work, starting on Road Street and going out and whatnot. And my understanding was, a lot of us doing this road work in advance, a big chunk of that was contingent upon this first residential development of the 56 acres there in the residential area. They were agreeing to purchase and develop on the condition that we were going to do the road build out.
Yes, sir. That's right.
Okay, that's off the table now. That outfit flaked out, tried to change the deal, wanted tads and everything else.
Yes, sir.
So we're no longer under that obligation necessarily. Now, we still need some road work there. The question is how much necessarily. I don't feel this, well, first of all, I don't feel comfortable with taking out more loans, number one. Obviously, we want to get this bridge done. We got a tiger grant that we worked on many, many years. I remember when I went to lobby and some of us went, this had to be in 10 or 12, 2000. We were in Congressman Scott's office and we were talking about that particular grant. And I pointed out to Congressman Scott that out of all of the potential applied projects in Georgia, that this one was the only one in the 13th district. When I told him that, he picked up the phone and he called Doug Hooker and he said, "You better make sure that my bridge is on this, is on this tiger grant." And he said, "Yes, sir, we're gonna make sure, we're gonna put it near the top of the list," and we were glad to get it, we're glad to get the supplemental. I don't, I don't feel so good about, again, leveraging out and loaning out more money that, you know. I don't want to be leveraged up to our necks in loans. You know, we need the development, obviously, but at the same time, road work, we need a lot of road work in this city. We're trying to develop a new segment of the city. I get that. But, you know, we're. But, you know, we're obligated to the residents of this city first and foremost. And that means above business interest. Now, we wanna develop, don't get me wrong, this is my ward and district area, and we fought hard to get that land back from the city of Atlanta. So I'm the first one that wants to fight to make sure that we develop that area. And we develop those roads, or portions of those roads in order to develop that area. But, you know, as they say down in La Grange, Georgia, where my folks are from, you know, you feed your family first before you feed a visiting guest now. So I, I'm looking for some middle ground here in terms of how much road work we actually need to do to spur that development. Now, I think there's gonna be another buyer coming, in particularly for that prime area, which is the residential area, which is obviously more valuable, but because it's a dual purpose, where you can, you can do more with it. Uh, I don't think they necessarily are gonna say all the road work has to be done, whatever have you. They may be willing to buy in with some of it, perhaps. You know, so, so I just, I just, you know, when things change, we did something based on that contract. Maybe we just need to take another look at this before we, you know, jump all in into a loan again.
So if I could, make a few comments?
Sure, yeah.
So your last tour of duty here on College Park City Council, how long did it last? Was it fifteen years? How long were you on council?
Twelve years.
Twelve years. Y'all worked hard, you saved money, and you had plenty of money. So when the arena came along, you know, y'all stroked a check for nine million dollars at the general fund to keep the borrowing less. So I know your ethic is to borrow less money if you can help it. The problem we have now is COVID settled in on, on our town and it has just hammered us. And so a decision you got is, um, cut out some of the projects at Six West and not fund them with bonds and save you cash to do projects at Six West as it comes, as it gets collected. Or save the cash to do projects all over town as it gets collected. But you can't do both. You either gotta borrow money and get stuff done now, or wait over a five-year period as you collect the T-SPLS to get things done. And one, one last thing I want to say now, hush. So this residential development, they wanted to know that we were starting to build the road before they closed. And so we started, Mayor and Council authorized the contract, CW Matthews, I don't know, sometime last year. Other purchasers, there's one to purchase a hotel site for three million dollars. Their purchase and sale agreement said that the road had to be built before they bought and closed. And so, um, we were projected to have the road, Road Street, built by, I think, May of next year. So we were expecting a three million dollar price there. There was another major hospital that I'm, don't think I'm at liberty to give the name, but y'all know who it is. They want that road built in order to close. And so there's some things that are contingent on that road, there's nothing contingent on the pedestrian bridge.
Right, so that outfit was not the only one.
No, sir.
Do we have that letter?
But, but now all those cats might not close. It ain't a guarantee.
My point exactly, just like the first one, for the first fifty-six acres. First thing, do we have those letters from those outfits?
Yes, Artie does.
If you can circulate those, I'd like to take a look at those. You know, the new developer that comes in will see that we've already started on the roads. Now, they're just talking about Road Street directly. Now, that's not nine million dollars worth of road, just Road Street. We were talking about a bit more.
Yeah, Road Street was eleven million, six hundred and thirty thousand.
Road Street alone?
Alone.
Yep.
It, it had been as high as fourteen.
Well, you had the bridge in there too, Joe.
That's with the bridge.
That's, that's with the bridge over the creek.
Right.
Not over Camp Creek.
No, I, I know, I know, that, that, you know, the bridge, that I had a lot of questions about. And Ms. Tyus, I, I know when we met, I asked about the person coming out to show me the alternative reasons for that bridge, I hadn't, I hadn't heard from anyone.
Uh, yeah, that was, yeah, okay, that was Friday, so you'll hear from someone.
Okay, well, I was hoping to hear from him before I, before it got here, that's, that was the, that was the idea, but it's, it's, yeah. Over here, where we are. Uh, I'm, I'm just not as comfortable in, in that sense, but, but, uh...
So here's my point I wanna make. If I got a, if I need three million, seven for roads, three, three point nine million for roads and three point seven million for the pedestrian bridge, I, I don't have enough cash to do both. So you have to push one project off and just let the cash accumulate.
I, I, I probably, I know the dilemma when.
Yes.
My thought was a, a middle ground. If we borrow a bit less, we're still developing the Road Street. It's in process, it's in process now. We borrow less. The fifty-six acres, there goes, there's gonna be another buyer that's gonna come calling for that. That'll be eight, hopefully eight to ten million for that, if we get a little more for it. You got your money for the roads, we put in a little bit now, we don't have to loan, take out a loan so, so sizable necessarily. I think we're gonna sell that piece because that, that piece is the prime piece, it's residential, so...
And we got another five million supposedly gonna close when Road's is done.
Right. Right, so, so, you know, my suggestion was to meet, you know, meet the loan halfway so we can get finished, get, get going with it, get it maybe close to halfway. We get a buyer on the big piece of land and we got the cash and we can do it without leveraging ourselves once again. So that, that's my suggestion, if we could come up with a smaller figure.
So help me, build half of Road Street?
No, take out a fraction of that loan, we're gonna build the whole thing.
I see.
Get this piece closed, which I know another suitor will come calling. I've heard from some that wanna buy it now as well, you know, so I think it's gonna go.
See, here was my thought process.
So that, that's just my thing.
Picture in your mind, if you got two hundred thousand dollars a month for, for twelve months, that's two point four million. So if I did a two point four million dollar loan for roads, which I need three point nine, but if I did two point four million for roads, there would be none, no T-SPLS available for sidewalks and streets in yours, y'all's districts until I got that bond issue paid off.
Exactly.
So if I do three point nine million, I think that's about fifteen months of collections. Is that, what is that, three point nine divided by two hundred, what's four million, that's twenty months, ten months, twenty months, twenty months. So twenty months of collections will pay off roads.
I, 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 I get you.
Okay.
I just, I'm, I just don't, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna hold the community hostage for the roads and sidewalks they need based on waiting on, betting on the come from some developer. That's my point.
Yes, sir.
I'm here first resident. Business is great, you can't do commerce without it, but business runs second, as far as I'm concerned.
Yes, sir.
But that's just me, you know, so, uh, you know, that, that, well, that, that's all I got on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen?
Okay, uh, a couple of things. You said the interest rate's two point five?
That's what I'm projecting now, that's a half a percent higher than current market. To accommodate, by the time we send out bids, the Fed will have raised rates another half a percent. So that two and a half factors in the next Fed raise.
And where do they project it to go to, say in six months or another year, you have any idea?
So the Fed says they're gonna do two, they're gonna do six raises this year, they've done one at twenty-five basis points, so there's five left. And so I expect this time next year, rates will be maybe two percent higher than they are now.
Okay, uh, I just, I don't like debt, uh, but, uh, I also don't wanna raise taxes, which could be a very strong possibility if things don't work out. I do think the bridge going in there will bring a lot to Six West, not only for the, the housing, but for the other people looking to come into Six West. Uh, I think this will give us, I think you said, some additional money for streets and sidewalks as well?
Yes, so I, I just want y'all to know, I'm your financial advisor, I'm not trying to sell you on something.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you options. So when we were, the staff was putting this proposal together for you last week, we knew that roads is already there and we got to do that three point nine. If we had to accommodate the bridge, um, then, you know, that's another twenty months worth of collections. And the collections are sixty months. So if we did that, that'd be forty months that y'all wouldn't have any money for streets and paving in your district. So Madam Tyus says, let's borrow another three million so that we can give money up front so that y'all residents don't pay for what's going on in Six West. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say?
It makes sense to me, as long as we don't use that three million for other things. We make sure that we, we hold it for, for streets and repairs and sidewalks, what we need, so...
That's what it'll be dedicated for.
Okay.
But you don't have to do that, the, the other option would be just to go on and finish roads with cash. Don't do the pedestrian bridge, wait till you get some land sales and then do the pedestrian bridge, he'd like to bid it out again. But you don't, you don't have to do this, there's, there's an option too.
I understand.
But it would be, but you'd have to put off that bridge, I think, we don't have enough cash to do it. Wouldn't you agree with that?
Um, yes, I would absolutely agree. And then with the, um, with the continuous cost, uh, of, of, of steel and all this stuff continually going up, it'll, it'll be something else if you put it off for another twenty months, three years.
Any other questions, Councilman Allen?
No more questions here.
Councilman Gay?
Sure, uh, you said that the other purchase contracts that are still there are, we told them that we would complete Rose Bridge?
Yes, sir.
That's in the contract?
In, they required it of us to close.
I'm saying, but that's in the language of the contract.
But it is with at least one of them, I'm not sure about the hospital one, I haven't seen the hospital one.
So you think it's, which one is it in?
The hotel one, the one with three million dollars, I've seen that for sale.
And how much do we expect to get from the hotel purchase?
Three, three million purchase price, but, but remember now, you know how that is.
Sure, sure.
They may close and may not.
Sure, and when do you expect them to close?
May of next year, they said they would close sixty days from the day the road was finished.
Okay.
And that's in their contract.
Alright.
That don't mean nothing, you know, being in a contract.
So we could also just not do roads tonight, right?
I don't know, that's up to Jackson. Where, where do y'all stand on roads?
No, 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 excuse me. What I'm saying is, financially speaking, we could scratch the Road Street project.
I'm, I don't know, Jackson candid? Can they scratch Road Street? Who, who's on Road Street?
Who's doing the Road Street project?
The council already approved Road Street, did you not?
No, the question, the question is, I, can we, can we make a decision tonight not to complete Road Street?
Are bulldozers out there running that?
Yes, sir. I don't know, I ain't, I ain't seen it.
So there is equipment out there, they've cleared, they've cleared, they've also some, uh, uh, sanitary sewer has been put in there, manholes have been brought in there, they're moving along, we've got the FAA permit, uh, done so that they can put, put the crane in, the crane is supposed to be moving in. Uh, the guys back there, there's three of them, they're back there from CW Matthews, uh, just to make sure that you're introduced that they're in there, they're in here for the bridge project, pedestrian bridge. There's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on. So let me ask you this. This, this is the part I don't understand. If you look at the cost that the city bought the land back from Atlanta, if you look at the cost that we spent to lower the petroleum lines, if you look at the cost that we spent to buy parcels from people so that we will have land that's not title or encumbered, if you look at the price of the studies like Sizmo, which is about almost a million, if you continue to add all these cost up, and if we ever develop Six West, then there's a cost to service Six West, there's a cost to provide police, fire. So I guess what I'm trying to say from urbanomics is, we don't, when do we break even? In whose lifetime do we even break even? So my point is saying all that is, since I've been on council and before I got on council, there was always this conversation, can you spend money at Six West? Then it was called Airport City. I remember when it was five million dollars from GFA for you to spend, five million dollars so that one day it would be developed. So my point is, don't the citizens have a right to get some of these projects? Don't we have a right for our tax dollars to go to us? Don't we have a right to, okay, let me ask you this question. What is the debt on the arena?
Approximately thirty-five million dollars.
Okay, and what is our annual cost to, 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 to pay the arena bond?
Two point eight million.
Two point eight million, okay. So my point is, I, you know, I don't wanna get into no preaching a sermon, but I fundamentally don't think we need to continue putting all this money into Six West. Let, because we just, just people just making money off us and it ain't getting developed. It's twenty-four streaks award for, twenty-four streaks that was left after, it was illegally annexed. And we got twenty-four streaks left and only, only two of them been paid in two decades. Only one streak got sidewalks, that's Herschel Road, and I had to beg Ambrose Clay for that vote. So it's not right, and I hope in the next election, when I run, when, when it's the next election, whatever elected officials or staff is advocating, I promise you, I will be out there with those signs, I will mobilize those people, and you would not be sitting up here and you would not be sitting out there. That is my promise to you tonight. So my vote is no.
Thank you, sir.
I, I got one more question. Uh, uh, Ms. Tyus, uh, CW Matthews folks, can, can they explain some of the issues I had with the pedestrian, uh, component there of the Road Street?
Sure.
Are they there?
They're here, yes.
Alright, yeah, come, somebody come on down here and explain this to me.
He's talking about the pedestrian bridge over the Road Street, the car bridge.
Car bridge, they, uh...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
You're talking about the bridge over Camp Creek, aren't you, Joe?
No, I'm talking about the pedestrian, the Road Street Bridge, the Road Street project.
Over Camp Creek, not Camp Creek Parkway, but over Camp Creek.
Over, over at Camp Creek.
The tributary, the tributary.
The water.
To Camp Creek.
Yeah. Okay, so maybe I can get my questions answered, these guys, come, just real quick, you know, I wanna...
Uh, yeah, yeah, they know something about it, uh...
Alright, alright, come on down, whoever knows about it.
I introduce yourself, Austin.
My, my name is Adam Gross with, uh, CW Matthews.
And now, he, here's the understanding that I got, and you tell me if, if, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I wanna get an understanding of this. Now, I, I toured, when I, when I got back in in January, I wanted to take a look at Six West, to see what was going on, see what the progress was. I took two different tours of Six West, and we were on Road Street and I'm being told that there's going to be a pedestrian bridge to go over this, this, this small creek here. And it confused me because I said to myself, we were on Road Street and Road Street was apparently gonna veer off to the left, looked like about thirty feet away, maybe forty feet away, over, over this, uh, creek. And that required apparently this seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar overpass. I asked, I said, "Well, what sense does that make if we're on the road now, why wouldn't we just keep on the road that we're on?" So I went on the second tour and I asked the same question. Then I, I went to Artie and asked the same question. You know, one thing you'll find out is if you ask enough questions, you'll get to some of the answers of some of the reasons why. Uh, I was told by, uh, I think Artie as well as the, uh, what's the other fellow's name that, that's handling the, uh...
Jesse Fredd.
No, it wasn't Jesse, it was, uh...
Steve Langford?
Langford, yeah, Langford. So they explained that part of the reason for that overpass, there's a five K walking trail around Six West. I guess somewhat our version of the Belt Line for Six West, five K of walking trails. Now, we've got the Brady Trail, we've got some walking trails. I walk the little trail there on Herschel Road just about a couple of times a week, uh, that's how I get my little exercise. Sometimes I take my bike. Now, I can see a few people every now and then walking on that thing. You know, whether or not we have a bunch of five K'ers, uh, I don't know. But I was told that the reason why we were doing this in part were that so that runners could have a continuous, continuous five K loop around this thing. And the bridge was necessary in part so that they would not have to stop at Road Street or, God forbid, at a crosswalk, uh, to complete their five K run. Then I understand the, the Woodward Academy component, they have a track team and a division of their track team is a group of long-distance runners, you know, long, long marathon runners. And apparently, you know, we partner with Woodward all the time for our facilities, so on and so forth. They use our golf course, this, that, and the other, and we're glad to let any of our schools partner with us on this type of stuff. But my understanding was, that was a big, uh, part of apparently having this bridge access so that the kids jogging... the kids jogging around would not have to stop at a crosswalk or stop for traffic. So that was some of my understanding of, part of why this bridge was necessary. So if you can explain to me the other parts of it, I guess, more or less, and why not just continue on Road Street where it is as opposed to moving it thirty feet over, I, I'm asking the, the...
He, he, he wouldn't know.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't know this?
No, no, sir, we're, we're the contractor, we're this building, what plans we have there. So as far as the design of that and the reason for that, that would be...
And could I ask you a question, sir? Is the bridge more expensive?
Wait, Mr. Wall, Mr. Wall, Mr. Wall, Mr. Wall, let, let, let's get Ms. Councilman Carnes first question answered, and then, and then...
Any, the three of y'all, whoever can explain, if the three of y'all can explain it, great, whoever can explain it, great, I just want to get a good understanding.
Is the bridge over roads more expensive to accommodate pedestrian traffic up underneath? Is it built big?
That, that I do not, I cannot answer.
Was it built for that purpose? Cause that's, I, I'm told that it was basically built for that purpose, otherwise, what's the point of, why not keep it Road Street where it is? You know, or, you know, and that, you know, I'm not an engineer, I don't know site plans and the whole nine, but I'm just looking at common sense, I'm saying, well, it didn't make much sense to me to say Road Street is gonna veer over here thirty feet to the left when we're on roads. I'm like, well, why does it have to go over that? It has to go over that apparently because they wanted to do the walking trail underneath so that it could be continuous. So you're saying none of that's the case?
No, sir.
Okay.
Alright, the first question...
So what is the reason?
First question you ask, you ask, well, why is Road Street where it's at? Because it's a limited access off of Camp Creek Parkway. In order to get a, uh, access onto, we had to go to an intersection that was already pre-existing.
Got that.
So I made a four-way stop there at, at Camp Creek and Airport Drive that goes into the Delta and also to the backside of the, of the arena and the GICC. When it came to designing the road from there across the creek, uh, we looked in it, we got involved in environmentals. That creek crossing had a culvert in it that was put in back in the forties, and bottom of it had washed out because it was, uh, was old. Been there a long time. So, and you're absolutely right. I went and I said, okay, Kimberly Horn and I, we decided, okay, we'll design where they, where they put a, uh, a culvert in, a big enough, an eight-foot culvert through there so that people could walk under. Well, everybody was complaining about at the time, oh, well, we were scared to send somebody through the tunnel, it would be unsafe and all that. So that was, that's, that was one, one, one other reason. You know, we did talk about just, just making it go, do a new box culvert, go over it. Well, then the Sizmore Group vetoed all that because we talked about it over here at the Public Safety Building. Then we, we went through that, then they said, okay, what we wanted to do was expand the bridge a little bit so that the walking, the five K walking trail could go under, that's my understanding. So that's why the bridge got expanded so people could walk under it, so they, they felt like they weren't in a closed place when they're riding their bicycles or they weren't in a tunnel.
claustrophobic, I get it, I get it.
claustrophobic when they went through there. So those were, the, as I recall.
And, and I, and I hear some of that, and I, and I do recall some of that. My question is this, again, is the bridge actually necessary? Could we continue on Road Street thirty feet to the, to the right of where the bridge is gonna be? That, I guess that's what I'd like to get answered from, I guess the other outfit that, that, uh, you said, Jake, uh...
You talking about, uh, C W Matthews?
No, no, the ones that aren't here, uh...
Uh, Kimberly Horn?
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
Uh, well...
Or, or, or in the size more.
redesigned, and we got, see, we got environmentals, we got creek, we got flood plain.
I get, I, I, I get that. And, and I'm not trying to belabor this. I know we got environmentals because we're going over a creek. The question I want to get answered is, why are we going over a creek when the road is thirty feet to the right of the creek right now? That, that's, I guess that's the question I need to get answered, in, in a sense, and maybe the Sizmore Group who designed this is, are the only ones that can answer that. But it's an answer to an eight hundred thousand dollar question, and that, 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 that's important to me.
From my understanding, the best information I can give you is that they are, you're building a two-lane bridge, and it's designed for a four-lane bridge.
Correct.
Right?
So, so Road Street starts out of Airport Drive, two lanes going, going into the, the new development, and then it's gonna go to four?
Yes, that's right. It's two lanes going in, we've got it for two, we also got it for three lanes coming back out. But right now, we only got two lanes, but it's gonna go from a four-lane going, four, two lanes going in, two lanes going out. They're only building a two-lane bridge, but they moved it so we can make a four-lane bridge for the future.
Okay, so, so are there four lanes coming out of the red light that, that we, that you designed there?
Yes.
Four lanes there, or is it two lanes there? Four lanes coming out?
Councilman Clay?
Alright.
Yeah, um, timing is everything. Right now, interest rates are still relatively low. Inflation, I think I said a year ago we were gonna hit double-digit inflation. Well, nationally, we haven't hit it, but Atlanta has hit it, we have double-digit inflation. It's going to go up. So if we don't do what we're talking about doing right now, we're going to end up with whatever financing we get at a significantly higher rate in the future, we're going to end up with significant inflation. That's the first thing. Second thing is, several years ago, we looked at two, we, I should say, we had two major contenders who were looking to take the three hundred acres that we had put together over literally years, even before my time on council, and they were happy to take it off our hands. And they were gonna develop it for us, and they looked at, we looked at plans, we saw plans, uh, and we kept looking at it, and we kept saying, wow, they're going to make a killing off of this land, when we looked at the potential financials, and they're gonna be buying it, three hundred acres next to the busiest airport in the world, well-connected to the MARTA, to the interstate, to the Gateway Center, to the Skytrain, and we're gonna say, hey, yeah, we put this all together for you, and here it is, come on in, Mr. Developer, and take this and make your killing off of it, and we love you. And finally, this council decided, no, we're not gonna do that. We kept trying to deal with two major developers, I can't mention the names, but bottom line is, we decided we were being taken advantage of. And so we set up our own plan, and we knew it wasn't going to be easy, but it was the best thing for the community. And so we embarked on this, and we're moving along. Along the way, we got hit with COVID, which decimated the revenue from our thirty-five-plus hotels and from our brand-new arena, and from the GIC that's been there was getting close to full profitability on its own, let alone what it would brought into the city in the way of hotel revenue and so forth. So, yeah, things have changed. As far as fixing streets and building sidewalks and being for the residents, I gotta believe that we're here for the long-term benefit of the residents. And yeah, okay, uh, yes, I've got residents in my ward that would love to have sidewalks. When their res, when their area was built, they chose not, or the city chose not, to have sidewalks there. I lived in a community back in Illinois where we didn't want sidewalks. Now, they may well want sidewalks there too, times change. But it's not like residents bought into any of those areas and said, oh, yeah, well, I'm buying in, I sure wish I had a sidewalk, but I don't have one, and I'm still gonna buy here. So I'm not saying we don't need them, I'm not saying that traffic hasn't increased. And we don't have streets with giant potholes for the most part, and we paved the streets that we have had significant problems with. But we're on hard, hit hard times with COVID, and so we need to make a decision. Are we gonna get our streets with sidewalks and maybe put in another swimming pool and all those things that benefit the residents short-term directly? Or are we going to build in investment that will maintain this city for the next fifty to a hundred years and make it the center that it wants? Now, we could opt out real easily, right? We could, we, instead of building anything over there, let's just sell our three hundred acres of land that we worked so hard to get and let some developer come in and make a pile of money on it. And do, oh, sure, there'll be some regulation that we can insist on it. But we went down that road, we, we wasted actually a couple or three years trying to find a developer that we could feel was in it for the good of the city and just, and not just to make a killing off the land that we had worked so hard to get back. And we let that, and, and we got smart. It was a tough decision, believe me. So now we've hit some bumps in the road, didn't, we didn't create them. When I think of the bridge, for example, the pedestrian bridge, I was there with Councilman Carn when, uh, Mr. Scott, Congressman Scott, picked up the phone and helped us out, and I'll never forget that day. It was amazing to see somebody in Washington really sticking up for us. So that was a great thing. But you know what's great about it is, I'm, I, in my ward, I've got a whole bunch of people in the Housing Authority, kids that I would like to be able to see get to the arena and really participate in the events, the basketball games, the Hawks. We built a Hawks Court here, or the Hawks gave us a Hawks Court here. And we've got good participation there. With that pedestrian bridge across Camp Creek, we can link without any hazard. If everybody's, I don't know whether anybody here has had, tried to cross Camp Creek Parkway, I never have, I don't have the intestinal fortitude to do that. But, uh, but we had a link with the, with the bridge, we had a link between the MARTA station through the trail, past our restaurants, past the entrance into Six West, where we've got a whole bunch of development going on that we can't talk about quite yet because it hasn't closed, over on College Street and the next block or two going west, that's coming. And it will pass through that area and then connect to the arena. So I've got a bunch of kids in the Housing Authority that can walk over there to the arena. It's a mile walk, not a big deal. I've got a bunch of people coming into the city through the MARTA station that are going by our restaurants, which I think everybody knows is doing well downtown, and they're gonna go through that trail and cross that pedestrian bridge and go over to the game at the arena, and then they're gonna come back and go to the MARTA and maybe stop off for a drink at one of our restaurants downtown. It's, it's an investment for the future. Yes, it is not gonna get the streets and sidewalks built for the next three or four years. And yeah, sometimes it's a good idea to try to economize on things for the overall benefit.
May I come in there? First off...
No, no, sir, no, sir, no, sir, sir, he's, he's not done, he's not done.
Okay, well then...
Sir, you're out of order, you're out of order. Councilman Clay?
How am I out of order? He just got through talking.
Sir, you are out of order.
How am I out of order?
Sir, Councilman Clay, were you finished?
He, I'd say he just...
Councilman Gay, Councilman Gay?
Are you finished, are you finished?
Councilman Gay, you are out of order.
Okay, is he finished?
Councilman Clay, have you finished your comments?
Almost, not quite.
Alright, go right ahead, sir.
When he's done, I'll let you speak.
Councilman Gay, I will come to you, I will, I promise. Councilman Clay, you have the floor.
Okay, so I am almost done, and I'm sorry for ranting, but I've been around here through enough of the hard work that this council and previous councils have done to prepare us for this event. And we can throw it all away if we don't time it right. And I don't want to see, after I'm off council, this is my last term, I think I've told this a million times, so it's no big surprise to anybody, I don't want to see after I'm off council, some developer come in and say, oh, sure, we'll take that three hundred acres off your land, off your hands, and we'll give you money for it, sure, about maybe a third, a quarter of what you can eventually get from it if, if you do it intelligently. So, uh, I, I, I'm emotional about it because I've seen the hard work that has gone into positioning us where we are. And I just can't see us throwing our future away, and I'm afraid that if we delay this now, that we're going to run into the situation where we will end up with somebody coming in and saying, hey, we'll take it off your hands. And I don't want to see that happen. I think we've got a sound plan. I think the, uh, Road Street is key to opening the door. If Artie were here, he could tell you that we've got a bunch of people out there that are looking to step in and take over, uh, positions in Six West. There will be another subdivision that comes in, and I will say something else about the subdivision, and that is, there's a movement a fit, afoot in the United States to build subdivisions and rent them out. We don't need more rental in College Park, we need more housing that is affordable, housing that people can build value for themselves by owning their own homes, and we can put that into future development agreements now that we're smarter, we get smarter every year, that we're smarter, we can put that into those future agreements and make sure that they will not turn into some big business hedge fund owning the homes that these people live in. And that's another opportunity. It wasn't intentional, but it worked out that if, since, if, as someone said, if this deal has fallen through, that we're not doing the residential development as planned, uh, another one will come, and that will have an agreement in the, or a statement in the agreement that says, it ain't gonna be a rental subdivision that no one owns their home and no one builds value except somebody working through a Wall Street hedge fund that's getting eight or ten percent return on their REIT investment. So there's a whole bunch of reasons why we are in a good position, we just do not need to throw it away right now. And I was against, and I'm against taking on debt when we don't have to. But times have changed right now, and timing is critical, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gay?
Well, first off, Mayor, it would be helpful if you read Robert's Rule of Order, I have a book in my office that I will share with you. This body needs to get, first of all, some decorum, because to allow someone to just continue to talk and talk without any limits, it's just really, it doesn't take that much to process. The late Jack Lundgren came to my office and told me one day, Councilman Gay, I'm gonna give you one thing, you don't gotta do all that talking, your vote is your vote. And for us to sit up here to let one or two councils just continue to go on and on when they already know what they're gonna process, the second thing is, we aren't developers. He's not a developer, you're not a developer, I'm not a developer, she's not a developer. Right. Okay, and we ought to stop acting like we develop. You know what someone told me? A man told me one day, he said, I'll tell you something. I give you twenty thousand dollars if you ever develop Six West with the body you got. You guys are not developers, you are not developers. And to continue to use all of our resources to develop an area, it's been going on for seven or eight years. And to just have one councilman just go on and on and on, that privilege is not appreciated by those voters. And it's actually not that impressive. It actually, it actually creates conversations, very serious conversations. It actually, it actually creates conversations, very serious conversations. You know, you could, you could do a hundred million dollar bond for all I care, but it's the principle of the matter. It is the principle of the matter. It is not impressive that you continue to spend all these taxpayer money. Your arena is a flop. You took ten million dollars out of our general fund. You got sued by your constituents. You not done the audit that the judge ordered. No one even goes there when I watch it on TV. And it is not free to the public. The Georgia National Convention Center has not broke even in twelve, thirteen years. We subsidized the Georgia National Convention Center out of our general fund. What life do you know that you can, that you can lose one point two million dollars a year and get praise? In what world is that we living in? I don't appreciate you grabbing your gavel while I'm talking. It is very disrespectful. There are some things that you do that I dare not say publicly on that film, but I don't beat my gavel. Don't disrespect me and don't disrespect my citizens and my ward. You do not let a person just go on and on and on. Make the vote and move on.
Sir, are you calling the question?
No, I'm not calling the question.
All right.
I got one last comment.
Councilman Kern?
And folks, believe it or not, this is what's called good government. When you discuss this stuff and you talk around it until you come to something that sounds reasonable, and everybody's not gonna be happy with every decision up here, but you want discourse like this. But, uh, the bridge is a gift. We fought hard for that. We fought hard for the property. Ambrose, you make a lot of good points. So, what, what, what I'm thinking is, and City Manager, I wanted to get your, you know, thoughts on this, I guess, Ed, too. Uh, all right, so, we take out, this is the two percent loan, right?
Two, two and a half.
Okay. I don't wanna put the business interest in front of our residents' needs in terms of T-splats. This gives us the entire sixty months of T-splats in one lump sum, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in addition to getting our money faster for the bridge work, it's gonna get our money faster for sidewalks and road repavement. The money's in there for residents, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, if we take out this loan at two percent, you said eleven million? They're about-
About ten million eight.
Ten, ten eight. Okay. Uh, we take out this loan at two percent. We're gonna sell at least that big chunk that we were looking at, the fifty-six acres. I think, I know it's gonna go. We were looking at eight million last time. I think we can look at a little bit more for it this time. Maybe we get close to ten. Maybe we get it nine. If we do the loan, we need to put together a loan structure where we can pay this off immediately without any penalties. So, when we sell the fifty-six acres, hopefully around nine, we pay this off immediately. So, we have no more interest and we're not leveraged up to our eyeballs.
Yes, sir.
Residents get their sidewalks. Everything gets done. We can afford to do everything and, and maybe, maybe, maybe that works it out where we can get, get this thing, get this loan, and in six months, pay it off.
Yes, sir.
So, I go for, you know, something along those lines. But I wanna make sure that the residents' road repavement and whatnot is going on while this other stuff is going on. I don't want this to go first and we wait eighteen months until we see about the residents.
Right. And, and I think that's the plan. The plan is to do both.
That's absolutely the plan.
And I move to approve.
I'll second it.
Councilman Allen has moved to approve. Councilman Clay has made a second.
Now, you, you understand what, with this loan, those caveats where we can pay it off anytime without penalties?
I am completely cognizant that if I don't bring that back to you, you will fire me. So, I, I read you loud and clear, Councilman Kern.
And, and Ed, um, we can, we can share with the council that that was absolutely the intent, is to put a no penalty clause in there for early payment. And that's absolutely on the table for us.
All right. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For, for the record, what's the motion?
Move to approve the, uh, T-splats bond issue.
Thank you.
Can I add some fine print, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, um, you all are asking BIDA with this motion to sell the bonds. The lawyers and I will prepare the documentation. We will bring this back to you one more time. You'll approve an intergovernmental contract with BIDA backing the bonds and a resolution approving their issuance of the bonds, because they can't issue bonds without your approval. So, by this motion today, y'all, y'all, y'all are telling staff to move forward and get this done. It'll be on BIDA's agenda for the fourteenth of April. It's a joint meeting with y'all. BIDA will consider it at that time, and then we'll go forward and prepare the paperwork. Althee and I are gonna bid out the bonds, award it to the lowest interest rate bidder, and we'll bring this back to you one more time.
Understood, gentlemen? That being said, um, given those, those dynamics, I will call for the vote one more time. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmembers Clay, Kern, and Allen are in favor. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
Councilman Gay abstains. The motion passes. Item eight C, consideration of and action on request for approval of bids received for the Global Gateway Connector Bridge and Improvements.
It's actually eight D.
What happened? It's happening. We're trying to, I'm trying to have some enthusiasm here. We would also, I wanna introduce Congressman Scott's office. I, I'd like for you to introduce Dylan Nurse.
Hello, Mr. Nurse. How are you?
Uh, can you come up and say a few things? He's the one that, uh, is in our Georgia area. He's the guy that I talk to all the time.
Members of council, Ms. Mayor, uh, as you mentioned several times, the congressman has picked up the phone and made these calls before, and I am really excited to, to see this and hope that is the last time that he has to call Mr. Hooker before his retirement. And we can leave him alone on this bridge, and we can start moving on to other projects where we can bother ARC. So, thank y'all so much for having us and all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Nurse, thank you so much for all that you do. Um, you are always available, uh, for our needs. And you and the congressman's office and the congressman have been stalwart supporters of the City of College Park, and we greatly appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Myers?
I'm sorry. It's just that I've been so excited about it. It's been, we started in twenty fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. You know, it went over millions of dollars over budget, and then we, then we got more people involved in this. And, uh, so I'm, I'm here tonight to say that, uh, I'm proud that we've got the, we saved an extra five million dollars on the bridge by bringing it down. And I would like to say that CW Matthews is a, is a responsible bid. Archer Wester was a, a responsible bid. Those are two great companies, but CW came in at a lower bid. And I would like the mayor council to approve the CW Matthews to move forward in building the pedestrian bridge and sidewalk from MARTA station over to the GICC.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Mr. Councilman Clay, any questions?
I have no questions. Just enthusiastic support.
Councilman Kern?
I am very enthusiastic. Like I said, we fought hard for that. Uh, I do have a couple of questions for, uh, C, uh, CW Matthews. Like I said, this, this bridge is a gift, and we don't, we don't wanna delay it any more than we have to. But not while stepping over the needs of residents. So, um, what would be your level of minority participation on this in terms of subcontractors and so much and such? I was on the call with one of the, with the, uh, the, uh, mandatory pre-bid conference, and they talked about stuff like being able to assemble on-site, which would save a whole heck of a lot of money. I'm assuming you were on that call as well, I guess, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you remember some of that? And it's some stuff that makes good sense. I mean, we got a lot of acreage over there that's undeveloped. So, if you can build it, assemble it over there cheaper than assembling it off-site, you know, whatever's the best way to do it. The bridge is one piece. The other component is that set of sidewalks and pedestrian, was it twelve foot wide, eighteen foot wide, whatever it is, it's pretty, pretty wide gangway. Yeah, uh, going all the way up to the train station. I know there's some things that outfits aren't, don't have the bandwidth to handle in terms of maybe the bridge work itself, the superstructure, all of that stuff that you guys were talking about on the pre-bid. However, the other phase of this, going from road street, from, from, from the Sixth West area on up, I would like to see a significant portion of minority subcontractors, minority participation, whereas this bridge is built in our community and they feel like, uh, folks that generally don't get a shot at this kind of stuff have a chance to participate in this with some significance, a significant percentage. You know, there are a lot of big shots here, and Prime is a big shot, and CW Matthews is a big shot. But there are a lot of little companies that want a chance. And, you know, little shots don't get to be big shots unless they get an opportunity. And I'm hoping that you guys are gonna make part of this project to make sure that some of these contractors and partnerships and subcontractors are female business enterprises, disadvantaged businesses and the like. So, what is your commitment on that? Or do you have a goal for minority participation, anything like that?
Yes, sir. In the contract, there is a goal for minority participation. And in order for us to have a responsive bid, we had to provide that at the time when we turned the proposal in. And we did meet that goal, uh, going into it and have all intentions of meeting or exceeding that goal as we construct the project.
And what is that goal percentage amount?
Trying to remember off the top of my head. I think it was-
I wanna say it was sixteen percent.
Sixteen percent.
I believe.
Sixteen percent?
I'm going, I'm going for better though, Congressman.
You know, twenty-five would sound a whole lot better to me, and not just to me, and to a lot of folks in this community here.
This was the goal set at the time of the bid in the contract, and that's it.
Well, well, I wasn't here at the time, and I'd like to see a little bit more effort, and I don't think that's too much to ask in terms of a goal. Now, would you guys be willing to make that commitment as a goal? And you might not hit twenty-five, but I, I really wanna concerted effort on this, and I don't think twenty percent, twenty-five percent, uh, is overreaching here, if it's possible.
Yeah, we're doing all we can to meet the goal and to, to do everything we can. I know for a fact the walls that hold up the, the ramps are being subbed out to minority participants as well as the concrete sidewalks themselves.
Okay, well, would, would you be willing to increase that goal percentage a bit?
We'll do all we can, yes, sir.
Is that a yes? I, I said, again, if you don't hit it, we're not, we're not gonna penalize you and cancel the project. But I just wanna, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna a better goal than that, if, you know, and I, and you may be able to get better.
Well, remember, we're working under a low bid process, so we'll do all we can within our low bid that won't cost the city money.
All right. Well, so, so, so you guys can put that in writing in terms of an increased goal? Is that reasonable? And again, we're not gonna penalize you if you don't hit the, the high mark, but at least maybe you hit a little higher than fifteen, sixteen percent, maybe, if you give it a shot. You know, some things, if you give it a try, you set a goal, you'd be surprised what you can do.
We, we will look at all opportunities, uh, any, any changes or anything like that. We will look at all opportunities to add additional DB to the project.
That's, that's a great political answer. You oughta be a politician. You need to run for office one day.
We will. We will do what we can, yes.
Any other questions, Councilman Kern?
Now, that's all I got. I'm for the project. I just wanna make sure it represents this city well and our goals, so.
We're excited to have the potential to be a part of this.
Well, I can't stress enough that increasing minority participation as a goal. So, I wanna reiterate that again. So, you guys just promise to do your best on that, and I would like to see something more in writing, again. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen?
No, I just, I'm, I'm looking forward to the project, and, uh, Councilman Kern's gonna ride our bikes across there, so.
That's right.
You know, I've got two bikes, too.
Oh, you can-
I mean, I mean, you don't have to invite me, that's fine. Councilman Gay?
Well, congratulations, Mr. Myers. It's a great project. I'm glad to be part of the delegation that went to come from Scott Office. I was looking at the bridge on, in Lane East for you. Good, good for the city, so congratulations. So, anybody made a motion?
No, sir, not at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. And seconded by Councilman Kern. All those in favor?
Aye.
With, with the effort to increase the minority participation goal, I want that as a caveat in the motion, with the effort to increase that percentage.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment, Councilman Gay?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Item eight D is consideration of and action on a request for approval of a contract extension with Prime Engineering for the construction of the Global Gateway Connector Bridge.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hello again.
As we went through this, we, you know, we bid this, uh, before, and we got, got things that was done back in, uh, over a year ago. Now, now things have, you know, changed and everything's gone. Gasoline's gone up and everything haywire, but so, we went out and in this year time, we, we had an opportunity to go out and make, uh, other, make phone calls to other fabricators for bridges, other steel fabricators, to be more specifically. And we, and we moved them to get them on to the Georgia Department of Transportation bid list. And that's what we did, we, to help with CW Matthews to give them a variety of qualified steel, uh, companies that they could, they could utilize. You have to be on the Georgia Department of Transportation's, uh, bid, bid list in order to do, uh, certain, uh, projects. We talked about, you're absolutely, you asked earlier, we did talk about, uh, being able to put the bridge together here, but the, then the liability belongs to the city. And we are not taking on the liability by the bridge being built here. We're building the bridge in Houston, and we gotta go out, we'll inspect the bridge and make sure all those components fit before this bridge is shipped. So, we do not want, we're not going to, I am not going to put the, uh, City of College Park in the position to be liable for the bridge that does not fit. So, those are some of the things that we're doing with, uh, with, uh, Prime Engineering in addition, eh, because we need to go out there and make sure all this stuff works. I'm not gonna fly to Houston. I lived there for five years. I know what it looks like. But anyway, so back to your, uh, back to your, some of your questions to sub. We've got Pentagon Five Forty is still gonna be on this. I'm sure you, uh, Councilman, uh, Kern is quite familiar with Five Forty. They're still gonna do the bridge inspections. They're part of the, part of the, uh, percentage of EBDs. And it's also the drainage, uh, they're also working on the drainage. We got ECS is gonna do our geotech and testing, and STV's gonna take care of our bridging. Why do we have to take on this? Because of, of the accident that happened in Florida. You remember, they did that pedestrian bridge in Florida and it collapsed? So, uh, the DOT, they started twitching and decided that they didn't wanna take on the responsibility of that. So, they let, they wanted, uh, whoever's building the bridge, like CW Matthews. But we can't let CW Matthews do it without inspecting their, their work, and that's what we're doing, to inspect the work to protect our safety and well-being while this bridge is being built. And that's what I'm asking you to pass today.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Councilman Clay, any questions?
I, I, I have no questions. I'm just gonna move to approve.
Okay. And is there a second?
Second with discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Kern. Go right ahead.
Uh, Prime Engineering, Mr. McPherson? Come on down. Jackson, you, 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 you carry a lot of water, but I wanna hear from these contractors myself. All right, uh, obviously, I got some of the same concerns, but, uh, how much time are we talking to get this thing going here? And, and I mean, what, when, when will we be cutting a ribbon on this thing, would you estimate?
To start construction?
Yeah.
Uh, as soon as you vote, well, you've already voted to approve CW Matthews' contract. Uh, we will probably have to wait till you vote on the bonding, uh, funding for it. I guess that's the fourteenth. Uh, then as soon as that is done, we'll, uh, procurement will- I guess that's the fourteenth, uh, then as soon as that is done, we'll, uh, procurement will finish there, uh, getting information from C W Matthews and, and, uh, prepare to sign a contract with them. I would think that that would be by the end of April, first of May.
Okay, so in terms of a build and finish, is this eighteen months?
I think the construction is, I wanna say it's fifteen, sixteen months. C W may remember that number. Fifteen months.
Fifteen months?
Mm-hmm.
Would you?
September, September of next year.
Okay, September. It sounds good. So, wo- wo- would you start on the actual bridge structure per se after it comes from Houston? Or would, or the concrete pathway? Or, or would you do both simultaneously? How, how would?
Um, I would imagine, well, first of all, material supply chain, as we all know, is, is slow, so, uh, pipes, steel are taking a long time to get. I'm sure based off my memory of the schedule they provided with the, uh, with the proposal, or right after we got the proposal, uh, a good bit of the lead time is getting that bridge process going. They have to do shop drawings for the retaining walls to hold up the bridge, uh, structural drawings for the bridge itself. That's probably all gonna take probably about six months, uh, before they actually, before we actually probably see them on site, would be my guess, Joe.
Okay, uh, and I understand you, you, you just talked about the assembly to not being on our property because we could be liable per se. Now, contractually, can we come up with something where if you guys assemble here, that, 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 that you are liable for this, for, for the project?
I, I think the assembly of the bridge, uh, is up to the contractor. Uh, there are some, there are some stipulation in the contract, the bridge is fabricated in Houston. There's a lot of stuff that they will have to do in Houston before they ship it, because the last thing they wanna do is, is ship it here. It's a, is a pre-manu-, part of it is pre-manufactured, but there's a huge amount of assembly required and that assembly does happen here. And where they do that is up to them. We will make property available to them the best we can as a city, uh, to enable that. But the ways and means are actually the contractor.
Okay, so it sounds like their preference is in Houston. Yeah.
Well, no, that's the fabricator. The fabricator we know is in Houston.
And I'm familiar with that fabricator. I know when the airport, you know, when they were doing their, uh, we call it the two hundred and fifty million dollar umbrella, I remember what happened. They fabricated. They, I know they fabricated it in Houston and they pre-assembled it in Houston and it did not fit together in Houston. And they started pointing fingers.
Yeah.
The fabricators blamed it on the architect, uh, architect schematics and they had to redo a whole heck of a lot of that at a big expense. And then they finally got it together, then they brought it on here and, and sat it in that, that used to be, uh, extended parking there and, and put it together, but. So, uh, I, I, that, when you say fabricated in Houston, that kinda rang bells to what happened out there, so.
So the contractor has to do the final, final construction shop drawings for the bridge and that'll be their responsibility, not the city's.
Okay, last question, um, you know, my same, same concerns in terms of minority participation in this project, female business enterprises in particularly. We need a good, strong effort to get that number up as high as we can without obviously increasing your budget, but a good, strong effort for that stuff, you know, your subcontractors and so on and so forth. And I don't know if you guys put it together in packages like some of the other ones do, which are more elaborate, but sometimes you break up those packages, you know. A, a female business enterprise subcontractor may not be able to do that whole package that you got, but if you break it up, they can do half of it, you know. So just, uh, just, let's just try to be cognizant so that everybody can participate on this stuff and, and, you know, I think that's really important.
Sure.
So, all right, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen?
No questions.
Councilman Gay?
No questions.
All right, gentlemen, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Carn, second by Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, gentlemen, that is unanimous. We have no old business this evening. We have no new business. City Attorney's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, first and foremost, I wanna just report briefly, and some of you may be aware of this, but I, I spoke, uh, with Don Bolia, uh, later, earlier this afternoon, and I'm informed that our home state exemption, uh, bill passed both houses and is awaiting the governor's signature. So that's welcome news.
Excellent.
Uh, second issue I wanna raise with the council is, uh, the McLaren, uh, ground lease. I understand that there's some questions about whether or not, um, the City of College Park, Parks and Rec, being able to use that, uh, the gym in that facility, which obviously the city owns, whether that made its way into the ground lease itself or whether it was a, or will be a separate facilities use agreement that would, um, set forth the city's right, uh, to use that facility. As I understand it, um, uh, the, that provision was not in, uh, the ground lease. And I understand Councilman, uh, Gay had questions about that, so Councilman, I, I'll just try to field your questions at this time.
So, uh, how can it get there? How can, are you gonna do it as an addendum or?
Yeah, i- i- it would not necessarily be an addendum to the ground lease itself, but it would be a separate agreement between, uh, the city and, and, and school district that would set forth, or, or the, or, or McLaren itself, that would set forth our, our, our ability, uh, to use that facility under certain circumstances and we would be getting to the same place if it were in the ground lease or whether it was set forth in a, in a separate, uh, facilities use agreement.
But all I was thinking was that, uh, I was involved with a ground lease that took ten months and five attorneys to, to, to write. But we, we said from up here to add the, the recreation use of the, to the, uh, to the lease. And I thought that that was just gonna be discussed before we signed the, uh, lease. And I thought that the auditorium was an important part of our recreation department. I thought that was important to us. It's our building, so all we was just trying to do, we give it to them for a dollar. You know, it was just too much, right, like, right to just have a conversation about putting the, but, but why didn't we do it? Is there any reason why we did not have that conversation when we signed the lease? Is it because I said it or did we just forget it?
I, I thought, and Councilman, uh.
I was talking to the attorney.
I understand, sir.
So I would like for him to answer my question.
Mr. Denmark, may I ask you a question?
Thank you.
Yes.
Is it your recollection that the conversation, uh, regarding the ground lease, uh, indicated that we would handle the use of the, um, of the gym separately from the ground lease itself?
Yes, there, there was two discussions and I know Councilman Gay expressed the desire that while we were under the hood, so to speak, essentially giving a concession, uh, to the, to the school system, we should, in that ground lease itself, set forth our right to use the facility. Uh, and then there was other conversation about where we don't wanna put that in the ground lease itself, we could do that separately. So there, so there, there was certainly discussions on both fronts, uh, that, that was my recollection.
I don't have anything else.
All right, anything else? And the City's Attorney's report?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. City Manager's report.
Good evening again, Councilman Mayor. Uh, want to, uh, remind everybody that we start our budget reviews on Thursday. You'll receive the document tomorrow. We are excited, uh, uh, to, to share with you the strategy for this year's budget. Want to also acknowledge that the marketing campaign for the most will start in about a week to, to give the team about thirty days to promote it, uh, heavily. And, uh, we, so we've been working really close with, uh, Shannon and his team to, to make sure that we understand what that campaign is. So we're excited about that as well. Um, staff had an amazing weekend, um, so, uh, hats off to the police department, yay. Public works, they'll recover after. They said they're coming to get you, so, uh, basketball game, uh, was, was, was a good thing. Uh, we planted trees at the park, um, and we, and, and everybody, hats off to the women's kickball team for College Park, 'cause they kick balls and other things, uh, on Sunday. Good job, team, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Reporter, Mayor and Council, Councilman Clay?
Uh, yes, I had a couple items. Uh, first off, uh, City Manager, can we put a copy, as we always do, of the budget on the web so the citizens can take a look at it before? 'Cause we'd like to have them participate in the budget sessions.
Yes, as soon as I, as soon as I just hit the send button to you, uh, there, we'll, we'll get it on.
An electronic copy out on the web. Thank you. And something occurred to me tonight, uh, when we were early on, when there was citizens comment about a boarding house. We have, uh, B and Bs in the city that are illegal. Some of them we've shut down successfully, some we are trying to shut down. We have boarding houses in the city. We have halfway houses in the city. Uh, many of them are either under the radar or, uh, unprovable. And it occurred to me tonight when, when that was mentioned, why don't we have code enforcement put together a map? A G I S map of the city identifying all the homes that are suspected or known to be boarding houses, halfway houses, et cetera. And let's just see how many we have, 'cause I think the number would surprise us. Is that legal to do, Winston?
Putting together a map is, is not illegal, but I was gonna caution you, we have Fair Housing Act issues. You mentioned halfway houses, uh, a, a, some of these, um, homes are, they're the Fair Housing Act. So we have to kinda tread carefully on, on, on what we do. Just narrowly putting together a map that shows certain things, I don't think that's problematic, but where we go from there might be.
Well, I, I guess, I know every ward, e- except maybe Ward Two, I'm not sure about yours, Joe. But I know every ward that I've heard complaints of, of B and Bs or boarding houses. And I'm talking about things that are against our, against our city ordinances. I'm not talking about things that are, uh, legitimate within the ordinance. I think there are areas that have been reported by citizens and that we've had code enforcement investigate. And I think we don't have a full appreciation of how many of these things there are. I remember we had an intern, this was maybe three or four years ago, over around the Christmas holidays one year, uh, go out on the web and look at all the places that were being advertised as B and B. And we used a college student that was highly skilled in social media and knew how to hunt things down on the web. And they found, as I recall, at least fifty in the city that were basically illegal B and Bs. And we traced them, chased them down. You've written, your org-, uh, firm has written emails shutting them down. We've written emails to, uh, real estate agencies that have been advertising them, uh, as a potential B and B. And I think it might be, and, and we'd have to get a little innovative with the core, uh, coding maybe. Uh, these have been advertised in blue that are B and Bs that were advertised either on, uh, Airbnb or advertised as a real estate agent as being a B and B or something like that. And I just, I think it would be an interesting exercise just to get a feel for what, uh, what that situation is. And I'll leave that up to the City Manager to, uh, explore what we might do realistically with that, but that's the idea. It's, it's, it's primarily, it's not for the citizens, it's really for Mayor and Council, for us to say, how well are our ordinances being enforced? And you heard from somebody tonight that says it isn't being enforced. And I'm not blaming code enforcement. It's difficult to do. Uh, so that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Carr?
Uh, I got a few things. Uh, first thing, uh, City Manager. Uh, over at Embarcadero, um, I got a call from the manager, actually the regional manager as well as the manager. Uh, so apparently they, uh, they're working on a roof, uh, over there and, uh, they had flat roofs, which were some of the worst inventions in the history of inventions. Uh, so a couple of buildings there, they're doing a new design in terms of a pitched roof, thank goodness. Uh, they got the plans or whatever have you, um, so they, they took it to, uh, they said they took it to, uh, the vendor who's doing it for them. Uh, they took it to, uh, they took it to us for a permit, I guess to Sabrina, uh, and they're, they're redesigning the roof. Apparently with the, uh, redesign, it has to go through, apparently, the, the fire marshals or whatever have you in terms of, uh, uh, you know, we do roof, they do roofs all the time over there. They've done many roofs and, and pitched, flat roofs and pitched them. Um, they just said it's been taken a, a very, very long time and the roof is actually open right now with a tarp. There, so they, they're waiting to hear back. They said they were waiting to hear back. They thought, they thought that, they were told by, I guess Sabrina, that, I guess the, the, the fire department reviews the plans, the fire marshal reviews the plans for design or whatever, but let's, let's, let's get that done so they can, they can go on and, 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 and get it inspected and get it closed on up here. Um, so, so, but they said, they said normally it goes fast. They've done several of these. But for some reason, they've been waiting for weeks on that, so, so over at Embarcadero, I don't know where it is, but y'all go see the manager tomorrow and find out where it's at, if we can get the thing reviewed, review the plans and get that.
You don't know where it is? I'm sorry, what'd you just say?
I don't know what unit it is. It, uh, we know where the apartment complex is, of course, but, but it's there somewhere, you know, it's, you know, it's four hundred units in that complex. It's one of our largest. So I just wanna make sure we don't waste any time on that because they, they've been waiting a long time, apparently, a lot longer than they're normally used to waiting for. So that was, that was number one. Uh, a couple of other things. Um, this most campaign, uh, uh, Ms. Tyus, is gonna be very important. I want you to make sure that this council and the mayor is involved in this in some kind of a way, form or fashion, because at the end of the day, they're gonna be asking us about this thing and we gotta be able to reach out to them in, in the right direction. We, obviously, I think this is a good thing for the city, so make sure we got, we're part of that plan.
And Councilmember, uh, uh, Shannon is going to be a, uh, one of the present, is gonna do a presentation at our council meeting on the eighth date, so we can make sure that we know.
And that, and Shannon does a great job.
Okay.
But he doesn't know our neighborhoods block for block. We gotta get a yes. And that takes, uh, some public relations, you know, I guess on our level more or less.
And we'll, we'll, we'll definitely make sure that the council, uh, has all of the marketing materials and that you all can be an active part
All right.
of distributing the information.
Well, that's good enough for me. Uh, a couple of other things, uh, I talked about it a couple of meetings before, I notify. It's a great thing. It's, we love the technology, but, uh, it doesn't work for a lot of folks.
Yep.
It does not work for a lot of folks.
Yep.
There are people that aren't interested and I notify at all, but they see trash, they see all kinds of things going on. I asked in the January meeting, the first or the second one, we've gotta establish a number that somebody will pick up if they got a complaint, just like other cities that may not have I notify. You know, a lot of our residents would never use anything like that. They wanna call, they wanna talk to somebody about what they see up the block on their street and they wanna, they wanna response, they wanna be listened to. And that, that's, again, that's very important for residents. You know, I still call a lot of numbers around here sometimes and, and I don't get a lot of answers on these phones, you know. Now, I'm assuming everybody's back from COVID and nobody's remote working now. Would that be about right?
Uh, yes.
All right. I, we expect folks picking up these phones. We, you know, we pay good money for them to pick up these phones when these residents are calling, so we wanna make sure that that's happening and we would just wanna be. So we want to make sure that that's happening, and we just want to be cognizant of that. So keep making sure that they know we, the residents have those expectations. One other thing I want to talk about. We need a city engineer. We need a city inspector and a full staff with code enforcement, I think, under inspections where it should be. You can't have this much development going on without having those two components permanent, not leased out, not contracted out. We need somebody that knows every corner of this city for what we're about to be doing and what we are doing. I remember when William Moore was here, he knew chapter and verse about every pothole, every street, every covert, every crack in the sidewalk. And obviously, it's going to take some time for someone to get that well-versed, but we need someone that's twenty-four hours a day inspections for College Park, twenty-four hours a day engineering for every aspect of what we're trying to do out here. We got to get those positions in. I saw the positions you had that we were looking at, the three. Great positions, don't get me wrong, we need those too. But there's some that are that are that are really crucial here, I think, that we really need. And we got to cough up the money to 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 get the to get the quality and caliber staff that we got to get. And I say this on record because I, we were going to have to do this. You know, we're taking out these loans, we're stepping it up a notch. We got to have enough staff to accommodate and to handle this stuff in a in a proper manner. So last thing I'll talk about, I know we're, you know, I reluctantly went along with these loans. I I I know we need development. And, you know, we're in the hole. You know, this arena in particular, yes, it's in the hole. And we built it, and four months later, the bottom fell out, COVID hit. So, you know, and yes, we put in nine million into that thing. That's a big chunk of change, you know? But there are some other projects, I hope, coming up this year where we could potentially yield that number maybe annually if we work at it. And you know some of the stuff I've been talking to you about. And I'm hoping we can take a look at that after the smoke clears. I know we got a lot to do. And I want I want to really get into that coming into the summer, get into some new things possibly, once once we get stabilized. Last thing I'll say, folks, one of the biggest projects that comes up annually is coming up, and it is this budget. At the end of the day, this is where the rubber meets the road. You pay your dollars for that document. And we got a lot of needs within this city. There are pockets throughout this city that are doing pretty well. They have security, they got prosperity in their lives, you know, but but however, the vast majority of our residents, you know, those who live in our apartment communities, our housing projects, our rental residents, you know, they're literally, they're living on shifting sands, you know? And I don't know if any of us up here remember what that was like, but I remember. I I I remember. You know, I clearly remember what that kind of stress was like, what that worry was like, you know? Every night, our residents are sitting at home and they're they're hoping and praying for, what I've seen overall is one particular thing, stability. Stability. And I would like to see a budget based on stability for residents in part. Now, I know we got to stabilize the city and employees and staff, absolutely. But again, I always said, residents are number one. Staff, we love you, we can't do it without you, and you run a close second. But residents are number one, and you're looking at five of them up here. That's why I know they come first at the end of the day for everything that we're trying to do. So I want us to just make us, make sure we look at the, when we look at these budget items, I want us to just think, and I'm, how is this going to stabilize our community? For every dollar we're spending, I want us to really think about that in the back of our heads. How is this expenditure going to stabilize our community? And let's kind of, you know, I I'd like to see some kind of direction with this budget. I've seen a lot of budgets, I've gone through a lot of budgets. These were big budgets here, hundred twenty million, hundred thirty million. I did two larger budgets, one point two billion with the commission twice, you know? But but we really got to see what we can do in terms of making folks' lives just a little bit better. That's all we're looking for here. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Allen.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say our our prayers are with the family of Michelle Johnson, who lost her her father this past weekend. We wish her the the very best, and and our prayers are with you. Like to welcome the new assistant city manager. Thank you for being here. We're looking forward to all your participation and involvement with the city. Trees Atlanta came out to the Tracy Wyatt Center, and everybody got their hands dirty. There were some college students, there were high school students, there were staff. Fifty-six trees were planted, which is good. There's going to be a walkway trail for people to walk while their kids are playing on the playground at the Tracy Wyatt Center, which is, it was a good thing. So Lance, a lot of your people were out there. Thank you very much for for letting them to use the thing. I think everybody ought to be ready for a lot of pink, and the AKAs are going to be here this next week.
Pink and green.
Mr. Pink and green and eight thousand, is that right, Mercedes? Nine thousand? And they will be all over the city. So they will be walking the streets, they'll be at the convention center. Hopefully, they're spending a lot of money at the convention center and College Park. So I just want everybody to, when you see somebody in pink, thank them for coming to College Park, we appreciate it. So that that's good for the convention center, it's good for College Park, it's good for their restaurants, the stores, so, you know, that's just good all the way around. So that's all I had to say.
I had five things and you said four of them.
Oh, sorry.
Councilman Gay.
I just want to reiterate my earlier comments regarding Six West. I don't want anyone to think that I'm against Six West. What I'm simply trying to say is that, since I've been on council, there's been a tremendous effort to develop Six West. And I just believe that we should go expand our reach and try and find developers that have the assets, the funds, the capital dollars to develop Six West. One of my concerns is that if we continue to finance the master plan, so to speak, that Seismal Group did, who's to say that the developer won't come and say that the infrastructure, in terms of the roads and bridges, don't fit the model that they want? So I just really think we should, you know, slow down on spending the money and just kind of reevaluate and talk about how we could get a master developer. What I meant was that, I was told that it's hard to do business with a city in terms of development. It's hard when you have to get four votes on council and then four votes on BIDAR. It's just too many decision makers, and it's just not a good way that these large equity funds like to do business. You know, I was talking to a developer in my office tonight, and we were talking about Six West. Well, if you look at, if you look at Camp Creek Marketplace, that's a perfect example. That was, that was developed by Jeff Papp and Mark Toro. They work for North American Properties. And what East Point did was they they got out of the way, they did not spend all their development dollars. They didn't give they, you know, the economic development, spent all their time on trying to develop Camp Creek Marketplace. Those North American properties are out here, we just got to expand our reach. I mean, conceivably, it could be an institution, it could be, it could, you know, it could be like a north side hospital zone. There are a lot of opportunities there, but if we continue to try and piecemeal it, I'm afraid that we just don't have those resources. And I think our taxpayers are going to be the ones to suffer. If you look at War at Four, Deputy City Manager, we haven't spent a dime. There's been absolutely no economic development, but guess what? We have a hundred million dollar development that's underway right now called Rocket Homes. We have a seven million dollar recreational product project adjacent to us. We have two apartment communities that that have spent over twenty million dollars to redevelop, and no one has spent a dime to bring them. It's the leadership. It's the leadership, it's the word out on the street to, hey, this is a way to come in, do business, not a whole lot of drama, not a whole lot of problem. We haven't spent a dime. But look at the development that we got with no economic development versus the hundreds of millions we spending. And the other thing I want to say is, if anybody were to go to Global Gateway, if you go to Global Gateway and look straight across Camp Creek, you go see our golf course, and that's an intersection. Now, you're saying, you're calling Six West a billion dollar development, and that's fine. But when you come out of this streak that we spending seven million dollars on, you're going to run into the racetrack. The racetrack. When you come home from your busy job and go into your beautiful, you're going to run into the racetrack, and then you're going to go to the Delta parking lot. And we spent two million dollars to lower a petroleum gas line. That's what we spent, just, they came down here, just like tonight, and they were talking, here, it's great, it's a no-brainer. Two million dollars to lower a pipeline, but the flow is centrifugal. Centrifugal mean it's not based on volume and, it just goes higher where the pipe goes. It's centrifugal. My point is, at the intersection of Global Gateway, you can turn into Six West on North and South or Camp Creek. But where where we put the road at now, you can only turn in it going south. So what am I trying to say? Did you know that the petroleum pipeline didn't even have to be lower? It didn't even have to be lower, it was already below the street level. So is is it that I'm got a problem? Am I angry? Or am I the smartest one up here? That's two million dollars. And then you got to think, then if he's right about that, what else is he right about? What other kind of dollars could not, could be avoided? You know, all I'm saying is, we we got, we just got to really think about, this is a business. I was told by a council member, this is a business up here, and we got to get a return on our dollars. We in it to make a return on our dollars, we run a business. And this ain't good business, to act like we are developers. You got BIDAR in fighting, you got an economic, an embattled economic development director. It's just a lot going on to continue to try and develop a hundred million dollar development. Get a master developer, put it out in the street, and 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 expand your reach. I I know the owner of the Buffalo Bills, he could develop Six West a bar. He got that much money. But people talk. Ain't coming down there, lady beating on the gavel, the other man, all, and they ain't coming down there dealing with you all? And last thing I'm going to say, if you go to Moreland Avenue, Ms. Vela, if you go to Moreland Avenue, and if you go to Roswell Road, if you go to West Side Atlanta, Saturday night, my wife and I was at, uh, Ten Street. Man, I didn't even realize where, I didn't even know where I was at, I was lost. The development is that progressive. Why adding so much to development? And we here with a hundred million dollars. We have a hundred million dollars seed money, a hundred million dollars of seed money, and we growing so slow. We growing that slow, but those developments in just a couple years, you can't even tell where you are. So we got to have a conversation about what are we doing to, you know, to feed ourselves? The only other thing I wanted to say was, city manager, if we're going to spend two million dollars on streaks, if we bundle that in the bun, can you bring back to us decide what what streaks are going to be done and when, so that those RFPs can go out?
We're going to, I think Michelle has a semblance of a list, but with with this, these additional resources, you guys can help us decide. So we'll provide you a list of where we think the need is, and then we'll decide from there.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. As I said, I had five things on my list, and Councilman Allen covered four. But I'm still going to welcome Mr. Edmondson, we are happy to have you. And semi condolences to Ms. Johnson and her family on the passing of her father. And the last thing is that The Bridge Academy, which is at eighteen sixty-two Princeton Avenue, is doing free homework assistance this month. On Tuesdays, April twelfth and twenty-sixth, from four thirty to six. Their website is thebridgeus.org. They are doing Algebra One and Reading for, so for folks who may need a little bit of brush up on that, there's an opportunity to get some homework assistance. So I was certainly one of those folks that could probably use some algebra help. So folks can take advantage of that opportunity. So that is all that I have. And we are, we concluded executive session, but we do, and we need to approve some executive session minutes, but before that, let's go ahead and handle a couple of items out of executive session. Cybersecurity issue A for thirty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars, sixteen cents per year for four years, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Cybersecurity issue B at fifteen thousand dollars for one year, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that was unanimous, thank you. Cybersecurity issue C at ten thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars, forty cents for one year, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Carr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you.
That is unanimous. And is there a motion to approve the executive session minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, is there a second?
We both said.
Okay, all right. Councilman Carr, we'll have a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous as well. And so we have come to the end of our meeting, it is.
The Bridge Academy.
Yes, sir.
Can we get that out in all of our apartment communities where they probably, does that apply to everybody, I'm assuming?
There is limited seating, but other than that, what we can do is, I believe Ms. Swan has a digital version of it, and you can.
Can the PIO officer get it out to?
I believe it has been distributed, so, but we can handle that, let's, yes, it's nine fifty-seven, let's adjourn the meeting, we'll handle that. We'll make sure to get it. Our meeting's adjourned, thank you.